The organization meeting of the Board of School Directors of the Upper Darby School District will come to order. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Concert Choir and Encore Singer Chloe Clark.
Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. McGary, when you're ready.
During this unprecedented time while social distancing requirements are in place, the Upper Darby School District needs to continue certain aspects of its business, which includes decisions concerning pandemic planning. For this reason, the Upper Darby School District will continue regularly scheduled school board meetings while pandemic-related restrictions imposed by Governor Wolf and any local authorities are still in place. It is the plan of the school board to hold these meetings with the minimum required departures from normal operating procedures. The Upper Darby School District's School Board COVID-19 Special Operating Procedures Document outlines expected departures from those normal operating procedures and the policy justification for such departures. At the start of each school board meeting, while the pandemic-related restrictions are in place, the board will review the departures from normal operating procedures as well as their justifications. While social distancing requirements are in place, the Upper Darby School District's School Board finds it necessary to hold virtual school board and school board committee meetings to complete required business. These virtual meetings will allow for public viewing and participation. Following practices already in place for regular meetings, all virtual school board meetings, in addition to allowing near-real-time public viewing and participation, will be recorded, and the recordings made available after the meeting. In order to hold virtual school board meetings, adjustments need to be made following existing board policy. These adjustments have been outlined in the Upper Darby School District's School Board COVID-19 Special Operating Procedures. This evening in particular with the new ruling here in Delaware County and by Dr. Levine, we can have no more than 10 people in one space at one time. That is why we only have three board members with us this evening. Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
I will now roll call the board. If you're attending virtually, please state you are present and can hear the proceedings when I call your name. Dr. Hague.
I am present and can hear the proceedings.
Mr. Des Newiers.
I am present and can hear the proceedings.
Mr. War Savage.
I am present and can hear the proceedings.
Mr. Neal.
I am present and can hear the proceedings.
Mrs. Dawes.
I am present and I can hear the proceedings.
Mr. Fields.
I am present and I can hear the proceedings.
Mrs. Curry.
I am present.
Mrs. Mitchell.
I am present.
Mr. Brown.
I am present.
Thank you. Policy 003 allows the board to suspend policies or parts of policies when appropriate. Therefore, due to the current ongoing crisis, I ask that a member of the board make the following motion to suspend language in two of the board's policies for tonight's organization meeting and regularly scheduled meeting. The motions are stated as follows. Policy 006.1, which regulates attendance at meetings via electronic communications, the board member will move to suspend the language requiring board members to be present. Specifically, that suspended language would be: A majority of the board shall be physically present at a board meeting when a board member has attendance through electronic communications. And Policy 006, which governs other requirements of board meetings, the board member will move the suspension of language requiring that those members of the public wishing to participate be present. Specifically, the language in the section titled "Public Participation" would remove the words that read "present at a board meeting." Do I have a board member willing to make the motion as I stated?
So moved.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Does anyone abstain? Motion carries. This meeting is in compliance with the school code and is in accordance with the following notice, of which you have all been apprised and received copies. In accordance with Section 401(c)(3) of the School Code of 1949 as amended, you are hereby notified that the Board of School Directors of Upper Darby School District will meet the first week of December for the purpose of organization and election of officers for the ensuing year and for general purposes. The first order of business is the nomination and election of a temporary president. I will entertain nominations.
I move that we nominate Neil Des Newiers as temporary president.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close nominations. All those in favor of closing nominations signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying "I oppose" and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying "I abstain" and state your name for the record. Now we have a vote for Neil Des Newiers to be temporary president and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying "I oppose" and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying "I abstain" and state your name for the record. Motion passes.
Mr. Rogers, please read the list of legally elected or appointed qualified school directors.
The following is a list of legally elected or appointed qualified school directors. Terms expiring the first Monday in December of 2021. Edward Brown, Leah Dawes, Neil Des Newiers, Rachel Mitchell. Terms expiring the first Monday in December of 2023. Gina H. Curry, Donald Fields, Meredith Hague, David Neal, and Damian Moore Savage. I will now ask each board member to affirm they have read, understand, and will follow the principles of governance and leadership and the PSBA Code of Conduct. As I call your name, please state the following. I have read, understand, and will follow the principles of governance and leadership and the PSBA Code of Conduct. Dr. Hague.
I have read, understand, and will follow the principles for governance and leadership and the PSBA Code of Conduct.
Mr. Des Newiers.
I have read, understand, and will follow the principles for governance and leadership and the PSBA Code of Conduct.
Mr. War Savage.
I have read, understand, and will follow the principles for governance and leadership and the PSBA Code of Conduct.
Mr. Neal.
I, David Neal, have read, understand, and will follow the principles for governance and leadership and the PSBA Code of Conduct.
Mrs. Dawes.
I have read, understand, and will follow the principles for governance and leadership and the PSBA Code of Conduct.
Mr. Fields.
I have read and understand the principles of governance and leadership and the PSBA Code of Conduct.
Mrs. Curry.
I have read, understand, and will follow the principles for governance and leadership and the PSBA Code of Conduct.
Mrs. Mitchell.
I have read, understand, and will follow the principles for governance and leadership and the PSBA Code of Conduct.
Mr. Brown.
I have read, understand, and will follow the principles for governance and leadership and the PSBA Code of Conduct.
Mr. Rogers, I will open the floor to nominations of the president of this board. Do I hear a nomination at this time?
This is Damian War Savage. I would like to nominate Mr. Edward Brown for president.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? If not, may I ask for a motion that the nominations be closed?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of closing the nominations, please say aye.
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 Are there any nays? The nominations for president are closed. Mr. Secretary, would you poll the board, please, on a vote for Mr. Edward Brown as president of this board for one year?
Yes. Dr. Hague.
Aye.
Mr. Des Newiers.
Aye.
Mr. War Savage.
Aye.
Mr. Neal.
Aye.
Mrs. Dawes.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mrs. Curry.
Aye.
Mrs. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Mr. Edward Brown is our board president for the coming year. Congratulations, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
The floor is now open for nominations for vice president. Do I hear a nomination?
Yes, this is Damian Moore Savage. I would like to nominate Mrs. Gina H. Curry to be vice president.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? If not, may I ask for a motion that the nominations be closed?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second? Thank you. All in favor of closing nominations, please say aye.
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 Are there any nays? The nominations for vice president are closed. Mr. Secretary, would you please poll the board on a vote for Mrs. Gina H. Curry as vice president of this board for one year?
Dr. Hague.
Aye.
Mr. Des Newiers.
Aye.
Mr. War Savage.
Aye.
Mr. Neal.
Aye.
Mrs. Dawes.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mrs. Curry.
Aye.
Mrs. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Mrs. Gina H. Curry is our vice president for one year. Congratulations, Ms. Curry.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown, would you like to take over the meeting as president?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Des Newiers.
For president, Mr. Brown, would you care to make any remarks at this time?
Yes, Mr. Rogers, thank you. I'd like to say thank you to my colleagues for allowing me to lead this board for another year. I look forward to helping us navigate the challenges that we face as we try to do what's right by the children and community of Upper Darby. We know that we face some unique challenges and finding perfect solutions that work for everyone is difficult and frustrating at times. The thing that allows me to keep going in those tough times is the collective commitment of my colleagues who are in the trenches with me and doing our best to figure it out. I'm inspired by all of you, and I look forward to continuing to support Dr. McGary and all of the incredible administrators, teachers, staff, to facilitate the very best equitable education that we can. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge and say thank you to Rachel Mitchell for her amazing commitment and dedication to this board for many years. I'd like to give her a round of applause.
Thank you.
Not done. Her excellent service to this board has been unwavering, and we have benefited and accomplished a great deal with her leading the way. Her wise counsel to me particularly has been extremely helpful with me first serving as her vice president and then later with her serving as mine. We didn't and don't always agree, but we always found common ground because our focus, mission, and dedication to children remains the same. I equate it to that sister or sibling that you may have issues with on occasion, but when it comes down to it, you realize that you have the same blood and DNA, so you always come back to each other. The blood and DNA in our case is our commitment to doing what's right for the children in our district. She's one of the smartest people that I've ever met, and I look forward to continuing to serve on this board with her and learning from her. With that said, I'd like to give Rachel this appreciation of leadership certificate to recognize her extraordinary commitment and dedication to this board.
That's very nice. Thank you. Thanks. Thank you.
No, thank you. Okay. Our board and committee meetings will continue to be scheduled for the second and fourth Tuesday of the month, with the exception for the months of June and December, where the meetings will be scheduled for the first and third Tuesday of the month. If the schedule meets with the board's approval, I would like to direct the board secretary to post and advertise the 2021 meeting schedule. All those in favor of the meeting schedule, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying "I oppose" and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying "I abstain" and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The appointment and liaison representative and committee co-chairs will be deferred until January. May I hear a motion for adjournment?
Moved.
David Neal, second.
Thank you. The meeting is adjourned. We will go right into our work session for the regular meeting. Okay, welcome to the December 1st, 2020 Combined Work Session Regular Virtual Meeting. The first item on the work session agenda is a performance by the Upper Darby School Concert Choir directed by Ms. Barbara Beglin.
A lamp that kept on burning, a miracle they say. But the world has kept on turning, are there miracles today? Everyone who lights the candles has a bit of ancient spark. We are miracles lighting up the dark. We are lights, lights of memory. Remembering times long gone. We are glowing, glowing miracles. We are lights, we are lights. We are lights shining on and on. A row of burning candles shine bright upon your face. Linking you and me and all of us to a far-off holy place. But the blazing of the candles is not the only light. Look at all the burns shining here tonight. We are lights, lights of memory. Remembering times long gone. We are part of the Hanukkah miracle. We are lights, we are lights. We are lights shining on. Lights shining on. Lights shining on. We are lights shining on and on.
That amazing performance was Rachel and Leah Halbin. They are sisters, which is why they weren't six feet apart practicing social distancing. The next song will be "Oh Holy Night" by the Concert Choir.
Oh, holy night, the stars are brightly shining. It is the night of the dear Savior's birth. Oh, lay the world in sin and ever pining, till He appeared and the soul felt its worth. A thrill of hope, the weary soul rejoices, for yonder breaks a new and glorious morn. Fall on your knees, oh hear the angel voices. Oh night, divine, oh night, when Christ was born. Oh night, oh holy night, oh night divine. Truly taught us to love one another. His law is love and His gospel is peace. Chains shall He break, for the slave is our Father. And in His name all oppression shall cease. Sweet hymns of joy in grateful chorus raise. Let all within us praise His holy name. Christ is the Lord, who prays His name forever. His power and glory evermore proclaim. His power and glory evermore proclaim. Fall on your knees, oh hear the angel voices. Oh night, divine, oh night, when Christ was born. Oh night, oh holy night, oh night divine. Fall on your knees, oh hear the angel voices. Oh night, divine, oh night, when Christ was born. Oh night, oh holy night, oh night divine.
Wow, we have a lot of talent in our district, as you can see. Wow, wow, wow. The final item on the work session agenda is a presentation by Upper Darby High School Principal Ms. Kelly Simone titled "Fostering a Welcoming, Inclusive, and Diverse Environment Through Clubs."
Good evening, President Brown and School Board of Directors, Superintendent McGary and Administration, and the Upper Darby Community. Thank you for the opportunity to highlight this high school tonight. At the high school, we offer a variety of clubs and activities as an extension of the classroom and academic learning environment. Club membership provides an opportunity to participate in new roles as young adults and, most importantly, form relationships with adult leaders and peers. It also provides an opportunity to gain the skills that can be applied to workplace, secondary education, and other professional opportunities. We foster a welcoming, inclusive, and diverse environment to help students expand on the more formal knowledge learned in school. Typically, we run anywhere from 80 to 90 clubs in a given year. Despite the change in the instructional setting this year, we were still able to run a considerable amount, thanks to our staff leaders and passionate students. Students need to have a voice, make connections, and build confidence. We believe the clubs offered at Upper Darby High School provide this opportunity for all students. I wish we could recognize all of the unique and amazing clubs, but we can only share a few. I want to thank all of the advisors for their time and dedication and for providing a space for our students outside of the academic day. Special thanks to Ms. Richardson, Ms. Wilson Robinson, Mr. Moore, and Ms. Flanagan for your participation in tonight's presentation. To Ms. Mahias and Ms. Paladino, thank you for your hard work organizing and promoting our clubs. The clubs featured tonight are perfect examples of the inclusive and diverse opportunities of excellence that we continue to offer in the Upper Darby School District. Thank you and enjoy.
We have a lot of students here trying to find ways to connect. They're constantly trying to find ways to channel their passion and craft.
And when so many people have so many interests, it's hard to just limit the amount of clubs that you can do at one school.
There are so many clubs. There's a club for everything that any student could possibly be interested in.
At one point, it ranged from anywhere between 70 to 90 clubs. And last year alone, I was probably approached with, I would say, anywhere between five to 10 new clubs.
There's some of the more typical ones, like Yearbook, Art Club.
We have a breakdancing club here. We have a gaming club here.
I think there's even like a K-pop club there was at one point.
But there's also others like GSA, for example, Best Buddies, like things that are really great in regards to support of different people from different walks of life.
Best Buddies is an organization that was founded to promote people with intellectual disabilities and people without, to put them together. So the motto is "Everybody Needs a Buddy." What happens is a student that has an intellectual disability or a cognitive delay gets paired with a student that does not. And they do certain events all throughout the school year, both in school and mostly outside of school. And they do typical things that friend groups do. Go to the movies, go out to restaurants, go out to eat, just spend time together, go to a park, just kind of be buddies. What we have seen is that there are a lot of kids that are starting to come out of their shell more. You could really see that kind of growth happening, where students were being more comfortable, just having a friendly conversation with somebody that they didn't know. It's monumental. The more exposure that both of these kids have with each other, the more that they'll all be able to grow, and I think it'll really do amazing things for our district.
GSA is a much bigger thing nationally, where it was started so that students of the LGBTQ+ community would have some degree of representation in their institutions. GSA traditionally met Gay-Straight Alliance, but two years ago evolved into Gender Sexuality Alliance to more holistically represent current language. Like any club, people go to an appointed place, my classroom, they sign in, and our functions are usually a check-in process, a primary activity, and then a closure. It's cool. It's kind of like a support slash almost instructional space that's predominantly student-run. It gives them, for one, a safe space in a world where, regretfully, that is not necessarily a given, and so it is necessary at this juncture. If they're comfortable, they feel heard. If not, they know that there's a place where they can go and just hear people out, or if they find themselves... they find themselves to be an ally, they can come in and demonstrate their support. Upper Darby, as any place, it's a work in progress, but there are good bones in regards to making these positive systemic changes, so that, for how diverse our population is, there are places where everybody will feel not just welcomed, but have an opportunity to thrive.
We're in a time where a lot of issues are arising, things are being discussed, like whether it's racial, whether it's political. There's so many issues that need to be addressed, and Stay Woke was one of those clubs where you can go and just talk about those issues.
Stay Woke is a term that means you're staying aware. You're aware of what's going on, you're conscious of what's going on around you.
Each week, a new topic comes up, kind of bubbles up out of whatever the discussion is. It sounds like we're leaning in this direction, so maybe we can talk about that for next week.
The students put together PowerPoint presentations, they put together slide shows, they put together discussions, they have musics, they have themes, and they come in and they present various topics.
It usually is a flow, and it's a back-and-forth discussion between me and other students.
The students don't just come to vent, they come there to try to promote solutions, and they just make it known that we are here to help Upper Darby be a better school.
Upper Darby specifically, we harp on this image of diversity. So when we come to Stay Woke, we'll be able to experience that diversity and push it to a further limit. We come together from different ends of the school, we come together, we talk, and then we have this conversation about what we can do to make our school better.
And the whole point for me being there is I want to be a better teacher, I want to be able to address everyone, I want to meet everyone's needs, and this club has given me the opportunity to be aware of what's important to them, because what's important to them will ultimately affect the school as a whole.
I look at these clubs in particular as being wonderful examples of us as a district, as a society, encouraging students to be heard.
It's really important to have, of course, your educational base. Of course, this is what the school is all about.
But they're really firm, established building blocks, in my opinion. I think things like clubs and sports are the mortar that tie all these things together that help to form people.
Thank you again for this opportunity to highlight our students and staff at the high school. Thank you, Mr. Jason Taylor and Ms. Aronda Buford, for your help and support to promote us. You are the best. And finally, thank you, President Brown, School Board of Directors, and Superintendent McGarry, for your endless dedication to this district. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Simone, that was a very impressive presentation. Thank you so much for your work. During this unprecedented time, while social distancing requirements are in place, the Upper Darby School District needs to continue certain aspects of its business, which includes decisions concerning pandemic planning. For this reason, the Upper Darby School District will continue regularly scheduled school board meetings while pandemic-related restrictions imposed by Governor Wolf and any local authorities are still in place. It is the plan of the school board to hold these meetings with the minimum required departures from normal operating procedures. The Upper Darby School District School Board COVID-19 Special Operating Procedures document outlines expected departures from those normal operating procedures and the policy justifications for such departures. At the start of each board meeting, held while pandemic-related restrictions are in place, the board will review the departures from normal operating procedures as well as their justifications. While social distancing requirements are in place, the Upper Darby School District School Board finds it necessary to hold virtual school board and school board committee meetings to complete required business. These virtual meetings will allow for public viewing and participation. Following practices already in place for regular meetings, all virtual school board meetings, in addition to allowing near-real-time public viewing and participation, will be recorded, and the recordings made available after the meeting. In order to hold virtual school board meetings, adjustments need to be made following existing board policy. These adjustments have been outlined in the Upper Darby School District School Board COVID-19 Special Operating Procedures. Dr. McGarry, can you give us some detailed information about how we can participate in this meeting tonight, how the public can participate? Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. No problem. This is a board meeting this evening, it's a special voting meeting as well, so as a result of that, we will ask for participation in the meeting. You can send an email to boardmeetingcomments@upperdarbsd.org. Please leave your name, address, and for tonight's meeting, please make sure you tell us the board report you'd like to comment on. We will make sure that we read that into the record before the board takes any action on any report this evening. Again, boardmeetingcomments@upperdarbsd.org. You can also call in at 610-789-7200, extension 2000. Again, please leave your name, address, and be specific to the report you'd like to leave a comment on, and the board will take that into consideration before taking action on any report. It's very important that if you call or email this evening, that you make sure you let us know what report you'd like to comment on. Thank you again, Board President Brown, we can provide a reminder as we go through.
Thank you, Dr. McGarry. Please intervene at your discretion. The regular virtual meeting of the Upper Darby School District Board of School Directors will please come to order. There was a closed session this evening from 5:30 until 7:00 PM for matters to be discussed within the limitations for closed deliberations as prescribed by Pennsylvania Act 93 of 1998. For this evening's meeting, there were personnel and litigation matters. I would like to note that all board members previously polled tonight by Mr. Rogers are still present. The minutes of the combined work session, regular meeting of November 10, 2020, is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
David Neal, second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Ms. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. The reporter to secretary, please, Ms. Dawes.
The reporter to secretary is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Ms. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. Mr. Neal, the reporter to treasurer, please.
Thank you, Board President Brown. The reporter to treasurer is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Don.
Are there any comments from the board? Ms. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. We will now have the reports of the student representatives, Ume Sedique and Curtis Everett.
Good evening. This past month was full of excitement and celebration in the Upper Darby School District. As students continued their virtual instruction, many became restless and frustrated with the current circumstances surrounding the pandemic and new restrictions. However, the loyal students, teachers, and families proved once again their resilience and power through an academically and mentally difficult month. For these reasons, it was no better time for celebrations and a bit of excitement. Our district prides itself on honoring those of all backgrounds, and in November, we celebrated Native American Heritage Month. This recognizes and celebrates the heritage and history of those of Native American descent and background. November 16 through the 20th was American Education Week. We celebrate public education and honor individuals who make a difference in our school community and ensure that each student receives a quality, equitable, and prosperous education. Elementary schools across the district honored their November Student of the Month to celebrate outstanding student leaders and hard workers in our school community. Some students received their award with a visit from principals and staff. In November, Bywood Elementary School also kicked off their first-ever parent book club to stay connected and build relationships with families. Keeping in the spirit of celebration, Upper Darby High School celebrated the fall senior athletes by having students escorted and recognized in front of their fellow athletes and classmates.
Upper Darby High School seniors also continued the tradition of holding their homecoming court. We announced five king nominees and five queen nominees. These nominees recorded fun and personal videos to share with their class. Students were able to vote digitally for their king and queen. We were able to wrap it up with a very small ceremony while following social distancing guidelines to recognize the court nominees and announce the new homecoming king and queen. Students and families were able to watch the ceremony live on the district's YouTube channel. Although we would not categorize either event as normal, the students, staff, and the families worked together to ensure that students were celebrated for their marvelous contributions. It is important to note that each of these two events were strictly monitored, following recommended guidelines and regulations. Each student and attendee adhered to COVID-19 protocols. This year is still a gradual adjustment, but with the continuous resources, understanding, and ideas, we will prevail as a community. To end a hectic month, UDHS and DHMS had their Virtual Spirit Week for students to show their school pride. The Spirit Week included a color war and a district-wide college sweatshirt day. Last but not least, students were off for the holiday break and had a much-needed four-day weekend. November proved that even in this unprecedented time, royals still make things happen and wear their crowns with pride. Thank you to the Upper Darby School Board and Administration for allowing us to provide the monthly report.
Thank you, Ume and Curtis, for that excellent report. I can't wait until COVID is over so we can have you in a room and we can actually look at you while you deliver your excellent report. Thank you. The budgeted personnel and enrollment reports have been made available to the board and the public, and are recorded as part of the record. No vote is required. Dr. McGarry, the superintendent's report.
First, I just want to highlight, Board President Brown, to Ume and Curtis, I appreciate you putting in there the COVID-19 restrictions because your high school principal pushed and pushed to allow us to have an actual in-person homecoming court. So you can thank Mrs. Simone for that. I picked up on the dig about the restrictions, so well done, and good job, Mrs. Simone. Good evening, Board President Brown, members of the board, administration, teachers, staff, students, parents, and members of the community of the Upper Darby School District who are with us virtually. As per the School Code of 1949, Section 401, our school board held its annual reorganization meeting. I would like to congratulate Mr. Edward Brown on his election as board president and Ms. Gina Hackett Curry on her election as vice president for the upcoming year. Congratulations to both of you. The dates and times for the regular board meetings and committee meetings will be posted to the district website prior to the month of January 2021. The appointment of liaison representatives and committee co-chairs will also be posted to the website by January 2021, if there are any changes. I will wait to hear from you, Board President Brown and Ms. Curry, if there are any changes to our current arrangements. I would like to thank Chloe Clark for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, the Upper Darby High School Concert Choir for their outstanding performance and for putting us in the holiday spirit, to Ms. Simone for her excellent work session agenda items and reminding us all of the great work that we do here, and to Rachel and Leah Halbin for reminding us that our students are the lights, the shining example of the greatness in our district. I would like to take a moment to recognize the following students and their accomplishments. Tachkira Afifa of Beverly Hills Middle School for obtaining first place in a Veterans Legacy Project in the 2020 Veterans Day Essay Contest sponsored by the Delaware County Intermediate Unit. I understand that we have a video of the speech.
Hello, my name is Tachkira Afifa. I am an eighth grade student from Beverly Hills Middle School. It is truly an incredible honor to be invited to an occasion with such significant dignitaries. And today, I would like to honor all the veterans who worked and served our country courageously. What is a veteran? If only there was a precise definition of this word. When I think of the word veteran, I envision someone with a big heart, a brave soldier who fought for the land of liberty, hoping that Americans can live happily and freely because of their sacrifices. I don't know any veterans personally, so I contacted the Upper Darby American Legion post-2014 and requested an interview. I was able to talk to Mr. Joseph Kelly, a former sergeant in the US Army. He is currently the commander of this office. Mr. Kelly started his duty in June 1983 and retired December 2007. He served as a platoon sergeant. There were many places he served: Camp Ovi, Korea, Kaiser Slaughter in Germany, and he fought in the Battle of Mogadishu, also known as the Black Hawk Down Incident, in 1993. The advice he would give to young soldiers is to pay attention to your leadership and never go complacent. Stay alert, stay alive. This is the motto that his platoon lived by. Family is a very important component in a soldier's life. Mr. Kelly missed out on many holidays, birthdays, and sadly also raising his three kids because of his commitment and dedication to our country. His wife, Mrs. Lisa Kelly, is also a veteran. She served in the US Army for four years. She was a military personnel. She also deserves tons of admiration because she raised her kids all by herself when her husband was away. With the thought of maybe never seeing him again, but she was strong and never gave up, she respected his dreams and motivated him to keep going. Sometimes, I try to think about being in the shoes of a soldier, having to leave your loved ones, risking your life, and sometimes even thinking about not making it to another day. Seems very scary, but they always know they are doing it for the nation they love, honor, and respect. These brave souls who fought for us heroically endangered their own life just to keep us safe. They are the reason America is a great country. This interview with Mr. Joseph Kelly has enhanced my understanding and knowledge about our great veterans. God bless the USA. To all the veterans, thank you for keeping us all safe. Thank you for risking your life just to save mine. Thank you for fighting for our freedom. Thank you to all the veterans. We are forever grateful for your valorous service to the USA. Veterans can walk with pride and fame knowing what they have done for America. We honor and salute all our heroic veterans for their devotion to our country. Thank you.
I'm so happy we had a chance to actually hear that read. That was exceptional. I would like to have a copy of that.
Yeah, it's beautiful, and I think it's beautiful to have a young person in our diverse community refer to "our" country.
Yes.
I think that's powerful. So we will certainly make sure you get a copy of that.
Thank you.
The following Drexel Hill Middle School students for achievement in the Math Madness National Competition: Sean Scott, Sophia Demont, Josiah Marker, Jason Clarici, Braheen Amadia, Jacob Arum. All those students for Drexel Hill Middle School for their Math Madness National Competition will certainly be sending you a certificate. Maul Afkar Musheed Torano of Beverly Hills Middle School for earning second place by the Department of Environmental Protection, DEP, in the 2021 Pennsylvania Radon Poster Contest. Despite the pandemic this evening, once again, the school board, the school district, our teachers, our administrators, our students in our community, despite the pandemic, as Curtis pointed out, and you may have pointed out, our kids are still doing great things, and I think it's so important that we continue to recognize them. While we are certainly, we are still navigating the uncertainty caused by the pandemic, the district has continued to work toward meeting many of the goals of the district comprehensive plan. I am happy to provide a brief update on the efforts to meet the goals of our current district comprehensive plan. We have reviewed and recommended new materials, professional development, and resources for our elementary and middle school math, English and language arts, science, health at the middle level, and social studies programs at elementary and middle school. We've improved resources for our college algebra course, calculus course, statistics course, computer science course, professional experience, field experience, known as PFE course, and technical education courses at the secondary level. We have provided over 10,000 Chromebooks to our students years ahead of our technology goals in our current comprehensive plan. We continue to focus on trauma-informed instruction with our work with Lakeside Neurologic and training for our staff. All of the goals from our current district comprehensive plan that will soon be updated are important, but I hope that we continue to keep our eye on goal number one and goal number four of our current plan. These are the two goals that I really wanted to focus on this evening as a reminder. Each year at this time, there's an update on our comprehensive plan. Goal one from our current plan: establish a district system that fully ensures Goal one from our current plan: Establish a district system that fully ensures each member of the district community promotes, enhances, and sustains a shared vision of positive school climate and ensures families and community support of student participation in the learning process. And goal number four: Establish a district system that fully ensures that barriers to student learning are addressed in order to increase student achievement at all levels and continue to support students graduating high school, college, and/or career-ready. I mention these goals in particular from our current comprehensive plan because they speak to our most critical continued work on deep equity, access, and social justice. I know our school-level teams of teachers, staff, and administration have been putting in the work. Under leadership of Dr. Council and Ms. Melissa Figaro Douglas, meetings with parents, staff, and our district comprehensive equity team have continued. We are attempting to do even more. As I have stated in my past superintendent's reports and my promise when I became superintendent, when we discussed the District Community Township Alliance for collaborative problem-solving, our goal is to continue our equity work in the community. As a district, we are beginning our Upper Derby Rising Initiative in consultation with the Catalyst Community Conversations from the University of Pennsylvania. This is an important first step in our goal of establishing a community advisory group we've been working on for about a year now. It may take more time, but we are hopeful to gain momentum with this process. Catalyst Community Conversations has been gathering information through stakeholder interviews to help us better identify key themes for discussion for our school community. As they continue the work, and that very important work, over the next two months to three months, the first affinity or targeted group virtual meeting has been scheduled for December 10th. There will be five additional community forums gathering feedback on the impact our schools have on the community throughout early 2021. This information is being shared out across our social media, through parent link emails, and can also be found on our website. At the conclusion of this process, we will be sharing a report with the public. During my last month, my report last month, I briefly mentioned a book that the District Comprehensive Equity Team is reading entitled Excellence Through Equity: Five Principles of Courageous Leadership to Guide Achievement for Every Student. I talked about the book and what it refers to as, quote, "the arguments for equity," which simply, as the book states, "is the right thing to do that members of society share in a moral imperative to assure that every child gets what he or she needs to succeed." Tonight, I am following up on previous reports where I stated that our new supervisor of equity, Ms. Figaro Douglas, and I would be providing a look at some of our district efforts to remove barriers to student learning, but also to address what Chapter Two of the book calls "The Path to Equity: Whole-System Change." Educational reformist Michael Fulan, happens to be one of my favorites, by the way, writes the chapter and further discusses the moral imperative of the work we do in our schools and society, as only, as he says, quote, "realized if you can explicitly identify the progress you are making or not making." Fulan outlines eight steps that I have up here for you, eight steps that I've listed on the slide for you this evening. Tonight, however, I want Mrs. Figaro Douglas to join me in discussing Point Seven: Use Transparent Data to Improve Practice. I want to take a moment for the board and the public to look at these eight points that we have up here from the book that we're reading. And I mentioned earlier two goals. As we work on our District Comprehensive Plan and we read this book, I do hope that we think about focusing on two goals and the many strategies that go into overcoming those two goals as we develop our comprehensive plan. To begin, Ms. Figaro Douglas and I have been attending individual professional development workshops that just the two of us attend. I try not to dominate them with her, but I know Mrs. Figaro Douglas is with us this evening, and we've been working behind the scenes on analyzing district data trends, hiring practices through the ends of equity, our policies, looking at our disciplinary process and procedures. And we wanted to really start on a deep dive regarding our data, our student achievement data. So what's up on the presentation this evening is really what we call PVS data, known as growth data. There's two different forms of data that we receive. There's student achievement data, and then that's based on state testing, and then from that data, growth, meaning data that tells us how much our students are improving year in and year out. Ms. Figaro Douglas, I wanted to introduce you. I promised I wouldn't dominate. I'll just quickly go through these next couple of slides.
Thank you, Dr. McGary, and good evening, School Board of Directors, Administrators, Staff, Students, and Community. This evening, I will be sharing PVS growth data. This will only be a brief overview. However, we will share subgroup data in the near future. I just want to take a moment, and Dr. McGary shared what PVS is, but it's an acronym that stands for Pennsylvania Value Added Assessment System. This data measures student growth from one year to the next using state assessments and reports to determine whether a group of students maintain, exceeded, or fell short of the growth standard. I just want to quickly also overview the colors because many have a misconception that green, you know, represents something positive. With PVS, green represents maintaining growth, which could be problematic if a group of students are behind academically. Blue represents growth. Yellow and red indicate a group of students did not meet the growth standard. Slide four shows PSSA math from 2019. Some of the glows on this slide are fifth and seventh grade exceeding growth on the three-year average growth measure. Now, some areas of concern are our sixth grade consistently not meeting the standard for growth. Let's take a moment to look at our sixth grade cohort from 2017. In 2017, this cohort was represented by red. In 2018, the same cohort increased to blue. 2019, again, blue. This trajectory shows growth and promise. This shows our PSSA ELA from 2019. And our grows from this slide is that our fifth, seventh, and eighth grade exceed growth on the three-year average growth measure. Our areas that we need to grow in are our fourth and sixth grade, where they have not met the standard for growth. Our sixth grade group, again, consistently not, not reaching that growth measure. Let's look at that same sixth grade cohort of students from 2017. In 2017, that cohort was red. 2018 and 2019, blue, which indicate that there was significant evidence that the district exceeded the standard for Pennsylvania academic growth. Slide six, seven, and eight show so much promise. Slide six is the Keystone Algebra Assessment. From 2017 to 2019, it indicates that we have consistently exceeded the standard growth in the algebra assessment. You will see a very similar trend on Slide seven for the PVS Biology Assessment, where we also met 2017 through 2019. All indicate consistently exceeding the standard in growth in biology. Slide eight is a little interesting. We have the Keystone Literature Assessment. And in 2017, we exceeded the standard for academic growth. 2018, we did not meet the standard. 2019, our students recovered, exceeding the standard for growth. The growth was so significant in 2019 that the three-year average is still dark blue despite not meeting the academic standard in 2018. This concludes the growth data overview. We plan to do an analysis of data with principals to determine how subgroups are represented in the data at each school, then determine what barriers, access, and opportunity gaps hinder achievement. Ultimately, we will ensure that we continue to strive towards excellence through equity. Thank you so much.
Melissa, great job. Ms. Figaro Douglas and I will be now pulling apart this data for individual subgroups represented in our school community. As Ms. Figaro Douglas said, I'm asking her to then meet with Dr. Manfree, Mr. Salerno in the building, principals, and then bring that back. Each school will be able to pull out that data to talk about, you know, while we're seeing growth, and Mrs. Figaro Douglas and I have been talking about this extensively in our, in our meetings when we meet with state trainers, that, you know, growth and achievement are different. While we're dark blue in some areas, our achievement is red. So we need to look at how we are serving or not serving particular groups of students in our community. So please stay tuned, and we will be bringing that information forward, trying to give you little slices of data along the way. In reading this book, I think it's important that we talk about the data and be transparent with what we have here in our school district. This is public information. I think it's important we make it accessible to all. Melissa, great job. I am proud of the work that we do in our district and the fact that we have the courage to have conversations about our strengths and weaknesses. If we were going to match our tagline of opportunity, unity, and excellence, we have to acknowledge that our entire system has to improve. Along the way, we should celebrate our accomplishments, but it is important that we keep focused on the needs of the community we serve. We all have to believe in the work that we are doing, and perhaps a total and complete focus on the two goals I mentioned this evening. They could become the goals we work on as an entire community. Last month, we announced some of our 2020-2021 capital improvement plans. We continue to wait for a court ruling on our plans to renovate and expand our own elementary school and have appealed the borough of Clifton Heights' denial of our plan to build a new middle school in Clifton Heights. We have recently submitted our land development application to renovate the district building located at 8201 Lansdowne Avenue and are continuing to explore the potential for a new elementary school on the district-owned Cardington property. We will continue to communicate our progress on our facilities improvements as more information becomes available. During the November committee meetings, the board and the public were provided an update on the financial health of the district. Thank you to the hard work of the Board of School Directors, Mr. Craig Rogers, our CFO, Ms. Wendy Elgart, Director of Food Service and Federal Programs, Mr. Marvin Lee, Mr. Michael Casey, and our staff in the business office. We received a clean review of our financials, and over the last two years, I can't think of more difficult budgets that we've had to go through. So, Mr. Rogers and to the board, thank you so much. While the financial audit is certainly a positive news for the district, we are still in need of the appropriate funding from the state and federal government, so we cannot lose sight of the fact that our taxpayers pay, take a large burden of the responsibility to support the school district. Over the next several months, the district will begin to provide updates on balancing the budget prior to June 30th, 2021. To the Upper Derby Education Association, UDEA, Upper Derby Transportation Workers Union and Association of School Administration, UDASA, thank you. The work that we do in this district is a total team effort, and I appreciate your level of dedication to the community we all serve. In January, we are hoping to begin to transition kindergarten through third-grade students and low-incidence special education programs in cohorts for in-person instruction on January 19th. We will continue to provide our parents and community with as much information as we can prior to making a final decision. To our parents and our students, thank you for your patience. We want our students back in school as soon as possible. In closing, I want to wish everyone a wonderful winter break. I'm blessed and honored to be the superintendent of this district, and I look forward to seeing our work flourish in 2021 and beyond. Board President Brown, this concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. McGary, for that comprehensive superintendent's report. Ms. Figaro Douglas, thank you too for that excellent data. Okay, now we're to the committee meeting summaries. We'll start with the Education and Pupils Services Committee summary.
Thank you, President Brown. The Education and Pupils Services Committee met on November 24th after the Finance and Operations Committee. The agenda summary is available in Board Docs, so I'm just going to briefly go over what was discussed that night. The first agenda item was the Future Ready PA Index Annual Review was informational. You can see that presentation in Board Docs. The second item was the Elementary Computer Science Standards. Board action is required. You'll see it in our reports tonight. Mr. Schwartz presented the addition of the PA State Endorsed Computer Science Standards into our elementary schools. I hope you get a chance to look at the presentation that is listed in Board Docs. It's exciting that we're going to have computer science in elementary. The third agenda item was Algebra I Curriculum Resources. Board action is required. It's on our report tonight. Mr. Robert Schwartz presented Algebra I Curriculum Resources and Historical Math Data to support the adoption of these new resources. All of the information on the new Agile Mind program can be found in Board Docs. Agenda item number four was the Social Emotional Learning Elementary and High School Update. Board action is required. You'll see that as well tonight. Dr. Chris Paglisi and Ms. Wendy Elgart presented an overview of the proposed Elementary and High School Social Emotional Learning and PBIS Curriculum Integration. That is also in Board Docs for your review. Agenda item number five, Keystone Exams Winter Administration Window. Board action is required. That is on our reports tonight to adjust the district calendar. As far as the, there was new positivity rate, and we're expanding the window for the Keystone Exams, or the state has, so we're adjusting our calendar to meet that. Number six is policies. We have one, two, three, four, five, six policies that are in review for tonight, and Mr. Jess Neuer's. We'll go over that later in the meeting. We had two public comments, which you can find in Board Docs. One of the commenters had several comments, so if you have any, if you'd like to take a look at it, you can find it there. Thank you, Mr. President Brown. That concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. The Finance and Operations Committee report. Dr. Hegg?
Thank you, Board President Brown. The Finance and Operations Committee also met on Tuesday, November 24th. There were, excuse me, four agenda items. The first agenda item was the 2019-2020 Annual Audit Report Presentation and Summary. The district's auditing firm provided an overview of the district's annual audit report for the year ending June 30th, 2020. As Dr. McGary already mentioned, we did get a clean bill of health. The, this item correlated to Goal One of the Upper Derby School District Comprehensive Plan. That is for board action tonight. The second agenda item was the 2021-2022 Budget, a presentation on the preliminary budget versus accelerated opt-out choices. The administration discussed the Act One timeline as it related to both a preliminary budget and an accelerated opt-out resolution. Based on the information provided, the district administration asked the board to move forward with either a resolution authorizing a proposed preliminary budget display and advertising or an accelerated budget opt-out resolution. The recommendation was for an opt-out resolution, and we will be voting on that also tonight. This item also correlated to Goal One of the district's comprehensive plan. The third item was a report on capital improvements. The administration reviewed the current assessment and priorities of our existing facilities, and based on that review, the administration made recommendations for projects to be completed over the remainder of the school year and into the summer of 2021. Many of the recommended projects will be paid for with the 2020 bond. This also correlates to Goal One of the District Comprehensive Plan, and this is also for board action. The final item on the agenda was informational. It was regarding real estate tax collection. The administration reviewed current and historical real estate tax collection trends as they relate to cash collected through October 31st of each relevant year. And the finding was that this year's collection is not significant- And the finding was that this year's collection is not significantly different from past years. And this also correlated to Goal One of the School District Comprehensive Plan. There were no public comments on the Finance and Operations Committee agenda, and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hague. The Instruction and Curriculum Report, Vice President Curry.
Thank you, Board President Brown. The Instruction and Curriculum Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Ms. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. The Personnel Report, Mrs. Mitchell.
Personnel Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. Before I move for its adoption, I would like to congratulate our retirees and wish them a safe and healthy retirement. Thank you for your service to the district. Congratulations to our staff, who has met the requirements to move from temporary professional status to permanent professional status as an employee within our district. Congratulations also to those newly appointed staff members who have come to join the Upper Darby School District family and serve our community. Thank you, and I move for the Personnel Report's adoption.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mitchell.
Second.
Second.
Yep. Thank you very much for seconding it. Are there any comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public, President Brown.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. The Policy Report, Mr. Des Noiers.
The Policy Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second. Are there any comments from the board?
Yes, President Brown. I would just like to offer a quick summary of the changes, the policies under consideration, and the changes to them. These comments are the same comments I made at the November 24th committee meeting. The six policies under consideration this evening are Policy 113.1, Discipline of Students with Disabilities; Policy 113.2, Behavior Support; Policy 113.4, Confidentiality of Special Education Student Information; Policy 122, Extracurricular Activities; Policy 123, Interscholastic Athletics; and Policy 123.2, Sudden Cardiac Arrest. The changes can be characterized as follows. For the first three policies, Policy 113.1, 113.2, and 113.4, there have been no changes in the underlying federal or Pennsylvania laws regarding students with disabilities, but there have been updates to the state's cyclical compliance monitoring process that prompted minor revisions to these three policies. And the remaining three policies, 122, 123, and 123.2, there was a minor change in the underlying law repealing the Sudden Cardiac Arrest Prevention Act and placing comparable language in the PA School Code. Simultaneously, language concerning electrocardiogram testing was added to the PA School Code. The new school code provision mirrors the language from the Sudden Cardiac Arrest Prevention Act and adds language that requires schools to provide information about electrocardiogram testing, including the potential risks, benefits, and evidentiary basis behind such testing. Schools are also required to inform parents and guardians about the option to request from the family's medical provider the administration of an electrocardiogram in addition to the comprehensive initial participation physical examination. The cost of the electrocardiogram testing is a responsibility for the parent or guardian. I should mention that these policies are up for a second reading this evening, so an affirmative vote by the board will cause these changes to be adopted. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Des Noiers. I think we already had a second, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I think, all right. Are there any other comments from the board?
Yes, Board President Brown, this is David Neal. In Policy, for the Behavior Support Policy, there's a definition for Behavior Support Plan, but in the policy, in that particular policy and other policies, it's now referred to as a Positive Behavior Support Plan. I believe that definition term should be changed to reflect the new terminology for Positive Behavior Support Plan. As of right now, it reads Behavior Support Plan.
Thank you very much for that detailed information. Mr. Des Noiers, how do you, how can we handle that? Do we still adopt that particular policy tonight, or?
I think we can, we can adopt the policy as it is listed in the agenda on Board Docs and then make Mr. Neal's, consider Mr. Neal's suggestion to be adopted at a later date.
Okay, Ms. Mitchell.
Mr. Neal, could you clarify which page you're talking about in Policy 113.2 exactly? Because I see the word positive in front of many of the things. I just want to, I would like to know where you're concerned.
Yes, it's on the first page, under definitions. It's the third term. First term is, I'm sorry, yeah, third term, it says Behavior Support Plan or Behavior Intervention Plan in bold. Before Behavior Support Plan, I believe there should be the word Positive Behavior Support Plan to reflect the change in terminology. Because then elsewhere, they're adding positive in front of Behavior Support Plan. So the terminology has changed elsewhere in the policy, so technically, there is no definition for Positive Behavior Support Plan now, because that definition does not exist within that section.
Mr. Neal, could you just confirm which policy you're speaking about?
113.2, that code.
Thank you.
Mr. Neal, are you stating that the word positive needs to be in front of the bolded section of that document?
I believe so, yes. I think it should be, if others are in green with that.
Mr. Neal, I agree with the point you make. We will address it as soon as we can.
All right, thank you.
Do we still adopt it, Mr. Des Noiers?
Yes, I believe we should adopt it.
Okay, that's a minor change, right, to just add that word so we can adopt it as is and make that update? Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Neal.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, any other comments from school board directors? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. That one update will be made. The Facilities Donation and Donation Report.
Thank you, President Brown. The Facilities Report and the Donation Report are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption.
Second, this is Leah Dawes.
Are there any comments from the board?
President Brown, just a comment from me. I want to thank the community, the community for the donations of a drum set to the Beverly Hills Middle School. That's pretty exciting. That came from Ms. Suda in Brookhaven. And also, there's a donation of face masks handmade by Ms. Dang and from Alden, PA, and we really appreciate that. And that's a great combination. The kids have face masks, so they come in and play these drums that were just donated to the middle school. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you for pointing that out. Are there any comments from the board? Okay, before we vote on it, I just want to state for the record that I'm abstaining, I am abstaining from the Facilities Report portion of the voting. My, an organization that I'm a part of, a nonprofit organization called Men of Action Use, the high school's parking lot for an event prior to Thanksgiving, and I was a part of that, so I'm going to recuse myself from the Facilities portion of the voting. Okay? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, sorry, thank you. Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Ed Brown, I abstain from the Facilities Report. I do accept the Donation Report. I believe the motion carries. Dr. Hague, the Finance and Budget Report, please.
Thank you, Board President Brown. The Finance and Budget Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Ms. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. And now we're to the collateral assignment reports, but I think we mentioned earlier, we're going to defer that until the January meeting due to the reorganization.
President Brown, I have one comment.
Yes, please.
In regards to the last board meeting, when we talked about the PSBA delegation assembly, I just want to tell everyone that I did reach out to both Dr. Bennett and, the name of the gentleman slipping me, but the one who's in charge of everything, sent a detailed email on behalf of the comments that we made regarding that assembly. And they did apologize. He called me, they apologized for the fact that, again, to excuse them because COVID presented a different presentation, that they're going to definitely look at the next, you know, large assembly that they would have. But the one thing that I think we got out of the conversation mostly was the fact that if a particular platform issue is tabled, that they're going to try to have some workshops or something in between so that that platform issue doesn't get lost over and over again and then eventually dissolve, so that, you know, members of the assembly or from respective boards across the state will be able to come together and discuss the platform. So they said that they would be looking into that.
Thank you very much for following up on that. When you say in between, it'll be discussions in between, do you mean before it comes up again?
Yeah, thank you for that point, President Brown. Basically, the Platform Committee meets every year, so it's annually.
I see.
And so, once a platform issue is tabled, then that means it will come back up again in August or the summer of the next year and then not be back on the table until November of that following year.
I see. Okay. Well, thank you again for that. I appreciate that. Any other comments? Okay.
Board President Brown, you mentioned a Use of Facilities Report, but Board Documents only has a Facilities Report and Donation, and the motion was to approve a Facilities Report and Donation Report, not a Use of Facilities Report, which is what you referred to.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. If there, if that Use of Facilities Report or use of the facilities by the organizations that I'm a part of is not included, then I'm okay with approving the Facilities Report as it stands along with the Donation Report. Thank you very much for pointing that out, Mr. Neal.
Yeah, another board member brought up, I think that was at last month's meeting. I believe that was included at last month's.
Understood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other comments about that? Okay, old business. Is there any old business from board members? Okay, hearing none. Is there any new business from board members?
Yes, President Brown.
Please, Ms. Mitchell.
Under New Business tonight, the board is, of the IU, has recommended to our board, who originally chartered the Delaware County Technical Authority, to assign board members to the Technical Authority Board. So you'll see a resolution, and I'll just read it since it is under New Business.
Please, thank you.
Be it resolved that the Upper Darby School Board of Directors accept the resignation of Maureen Carey from the Delaware County Area Vocational Technical Authority Board effective August 20th. We're also be it resolved that the Upper Darby School Board of Directors approve the appointment of Tracy Karowski to fulfill the term on the Delaware County Area Vocational Technical Authority Board effective August 20th to January 1st, 2022, vacated by Maureen Carey. And thirdly, to be it resolved that the Upper Darby School Board of Directors approve the reappointment of John F. X. Riley and A. Lewis Bogner to the Delaware County Area Technical Authority Board for a term of January 1st, 2021 to January 1st, 2026. I move for those three things to be adopted as stated.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Mr. Fields has new business.
Okay, I think we're going to vote, finish voting on this, and then we'll go to Mr. Fields. Thank you very much. Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify, please say aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. Mr. Fields, you also have new business, sir.
I just want to congratulate President Brown for another year as board president and vice president Gina Curry for, as vice president, congratulations to you both. You both have been involved in the community for a number of years. These are well-earned positions, and I want to thank Rachel Mitchell for her three years of leadership and for all the effort and time she's spent helping this school district and this board get this school district in the right direction. It is really appreciated, so, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. Any other comments from the board?
Yes, President Brown, may I make a comment?
Yes, sir. Mr. Worth-Savage, please.
Hi there. I want to thank Mrs. Mitchell for all of her years of service on the board, especially on leadership. She has been my mentor ever since I got elected last year, and she has been a wonderful confidant, a wonderful friend, someone to share faith in parts of our family stories with, and I can, and I can't wait to have that friendship continue to grow. And big congratulations to the re-elected President Brown and for Mrs. Gina H. Curry for becoming our vice president. This is a wonderful team. We're ready to hit the ground running, keep running, because we haven't stopped, and we're going to do some really amazing things together, so I'm encouraged. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Worth-Savage. Are there any other comments from the board? Vice President Curry?
Yes, thank you. I also want to echo the sentiments for Ms. Mitchell. Thank you so much for your leadership, and I'm sure I'll be in touch back and forth as I am already, but thank you so much, and this isn't goodbye. I don't want you to, it's-
I don't want you to, it sounds like that. We're saying thank you for leadership, and so, we just appreciate all that you, all the time you commit and everything that you do for the board. Thank you.
Yeah, I tried to make that clear with my words, that I'm looking forward to continuing to work with her and seeking her wise counsel, so I'll still be bugging you.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
I do want to congratulate both of you on these great positions in leadership. It's been a pleasure to serve our community in this capacity, and I wish you guys all the best, and I, you know, I'm here, you know that.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Class all the way. Any other comments from the board? Okay, we are now at the time for the public hearing. We will read both emailed and phone comments, which are subject to the three-minute time limit and must include the commenter's name and address. Ms. Buford.
President Brown, there are no comments for this evening.
Thank you. Is there a motion for the adjournment of the meeting?
So moved.
Moved.
David Neal, second.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 The meeting is adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Aye.